Let's come to order. Welcome to our work session. Let's do the agenda and the consent agenda and then ask your permission to move Mr. Bennett up so that he can get on with his evening. First of all, any questions on the agenda? Okay, consent agenda? All right, well, as you'll remember, when we hired TSBA to help us with the superintendent search, we also opted for the assistance on the evaluation. And so, Mr. Bennett, who did such a good job helping us on our search, has also been working on the evaluation instrument. You should have a copy. Have you already handed out copies?
Yeah, there are.
You should have a copy at your place. And so, I asked him to come this evening to sort of outline what he's proposing and sort of what the schedule might be or needs to be and answer any questions you might have. So, for that, Randy, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for inviting us and trusting up with this past. I will point out that there's a mistake on the first page. Mr. Burns found that for me. The second, the third date there should be September the 13th, 2013, and I'll explain all that in just a minute. But what I have here is a proposed timeline for the evaluation as well as a proposal for evaluation. Now, Mr. Odom and I have talked by telephone and we actually had a meeting face-to-face last week. We sat down and talked about this whole concept and we looked at some of the things that were available. And what we came up with, we think is consistent with the contract language you have as far as measuring specific objectives for him. And I'll walk you through that, but first, let me walk you through the proposed timeline. I recommend that, once you decide on a particular evaluation, you have that approved by July 1st of this year because that's when he actually takes over. And I also recommend that the first full evaluation happen in the fall and early winter of 2013 because you need a full year and you need benchmark performance from the state and all that information before you can truly take a look at something like that. So, it gives him a full year to put his stamp on what's happening. So, in case you're wondering why there's such a big gap between approving the evaluation and the first action that we want to take, that's the reason. So, you'll be able to get done with that and get these scores back from the state. Now, I'll refer you to the second, the first real page of the evaluation, not the cover page. But we would propose on September 1st of 2013 that we send out this administrator perception of director's performance sheet. Mr. Odom and I talked about this. He feels like this is, and please, Mr. Odom, jump in any time. He feels like that this is a fair assessment and gives the opportunity for administrative staff to talk about their perceptions of what's going on in the district. And we've got 20 statements here. And as you'll see, on the left-hand side, we're going to ask the administrators to rank that statement as to whether they feel it's essential, important, or not important. And then, on the right-hand side, how they think Mr. Odom is doing on that, outstanding, acceptable improvement. This is a really good tool for the board to take a look at how the staff that's directly affected by Mr. Odom feels about his performance, how they think about what things are doing. I think it's a good place to pick up on any potential morale problems or issues like that. We've used this very successfully with other districts and it's something that we recommend that you make a part of your evaluation. It's primarily there for your information more than anything else. And it will help you to have this information when you start filling out your own evaluations. But this, we would propose on the timeline to get out by September the 1st, 2013, and have a deadline to have those returned to us by October the 1st, 2013. They're not really affected by what the information you get from the state, but they will have had a full year and actually be starting their second year, so it'd be a good time to ask them to fill that out. What we would do would be to get the names and addresses from all the people that need to get a copy of this evaluation. We'll send it to them with a self-addressed stamped envelope where they can complete it, send it back to us, we'll tally it, and then that'll be part of the final report we bring back to you at the end. Any questions about the administrator? And again, these are recommendations, but any questions about the administrator part of it that we're recommending?
What steps are you familiar with to answer any questions of anonymity on this?
To do what now?
If there are administrators who would want to answer this in an anonymous fashion?
They'll be anonymous.
They will be?
Yeah, there won't be any marks on the paper. It'll just be this page as it is. It'll be sent to them, but there'll be no markings on any of the envelopes. They'll come back to us and we'll have no idea who we got.
So, this goes to TSBA?
Yes. We mail it directly to the administrator. The administrator has an envelope to put it in once they're finished and mail it directly back to us and we will not know because it'll have our, it'll be our letterhead on the envelope, so.
Were we to do that, is that a, an additional expense in the relationship between Rutherford County School Board and TSBA?
Oh, no. No, that's a part of the evaluation process if you want to do that. We're going to have to send that out and have those brought back as our expense.
In years to come, how would that be handled?
Well, each year, there would be the evaluation fee from TSBA.
Okay, and that evaluation fee is?
If we conducted for it, and that's $1,500 a year. So, if you all decide you're comfortable with this, you want to take it over, we've helped you develop it, you don't need us to do that and do that anymore, then you can certainly take that over and no expense to you because you'll have the instrument and everything that you need there.
So, the expense that we've already incurred in the consultation for the search and evaluation, it would produce an evaluation tool?
Yeah.
But not actually conduct an evaluation?
No, it would conduct the evaluation at the end of the first year. That's part of it. Now, we have billed you for the search, but we have not yet billed you for the evaluation.
Okay. At the end of the first year, is that the timeline we're talking about here?
Yes.
In September of 2013?
Right.
Actually, a year and three or four months?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Will this be a summative report back to us?
Yes.
You're not, I mean, it's just going to be an overall impression? It's not going to be a numerical presentation?
We can assign numerical values to this, but we don't necessarily need to. I think, bottom line is, we want to see on the scale where we're looking at here as far as their impressions of performance and how important each one of those things is to them. But again, these are strictly anonymous from the administrators.
Is that far right-hand column, is that needs improvement? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And I thought that said that, but I'll double, I'll fix that too.
Okay. Other questions on that page? All righty.
Now, the next page will be the first part of the potential board evaluation, and we're giving you two different types of evaluations. First of all, these are more subjective items and these are the type of items that I think sometimes boards of education and directors need to talk about because these problems pop up with boards' perceptions and things like that. So, this is your own perception about how Mr. Odom is doing. And as you can see, we've split it into six different categories. The first is board relationships, and as you can see, there's five items there for you to rank, all the way from exceeds expectation down to never meets expectations. The second one is community relationships. Again, what you're hearing from the community about Mr. Odom, what you see going on in the community, the different relationships that he's building out there. The staff and personnel relationships, I think you'll get a lot of good input from the administrator's perception there. That should help you as you go about and look at that particular section, too. The next page covers facility and finance and then vision and also student achievement. And the next section of the evaluation will certainly help with the student achievement as well. So, that would be the subjective part of the evaluation where a lot of your opinion would come into it. And then, Mr. Odom and I talked about the performance objective, what specifically needed to be measured as part of the evaluation. And we came to the conclusion that the state has set quite a few goals for Rutherford County next year, very specific things. And since that's what he's being held to account on from the state, why not make that a part of the evaluation? So, that's what we have, starting in Appendix C here, the next several pages, we're talking about the achievement measures that have been set by the state. Do you have any comment on that, Mr. Odom?
Okay.
Schools and the districts are measured on those particular items that you're seeing. So, I think it's fair for you to rate me based on our performance there. Now, some of the things, the way they're objected, I'll say to you there that you're not going to get every AMO. I mean, the way that thing is designed, you're not going to get every AMO. It simply says, for a system or a school, for Rutherford County schools, we'll have to meet a majority of those AMOs because we're the third-largest ELL. You've got several items there and the growth that you have to have each year, the set percentage from where you are. But the goal, and I'll be surprised if hardly any district across the state meets every AMO because when you add them up for us, schools very often, because they will not have 30 students or anything, may not have all of those AMOs that they have to meet. But as a district, we're going to have to meet them all. So, I would hope you would hold me to the same measure that what the state's going to hold the district to because that's what they will measure us as a district by, is whether we can meet a majority of those AMOs or not.
And AMOs, annual measurable?
Annual measurable objectives. AYP is gone, annual yearly progress is gone, and annual measurable objective is the new under the waiver.
And if you look at the two paragraphs at the top of the page, it does explain that a little bit, and you'll notice that I did underline a majority of its measure. These are things that you're not going to head out of the ballpark on everything that we've got here, but a consistent majority of the measures, the annual measure objective being met, is an indicator of success. And so, as you look through that, the first of all is the achievement measures overall and then gap closure measures for the different subgroups where there's been specific things set. And you'll see there's one for the racial, ethnic subgroups, one for the economically disadvantaged, English language learners, ELL, and then finally, for students with disabilities. And so, with those AMO goals that have gone out to all the schools in the state, it seemed like us, it seemed to us like it was a very logical conclusion. You're looking, I read the language in the contract, and you're looking for specific objectives, and I think the objectives that the state are setting as far as what we're replacing No Child Left Behind with seems to me to be a very valid measure. And certainly, as you heard Mr. Odom say, he has no problem with being measured by that because that's what he's expected to achieve. So, those will be our recommendations as far as specific objectives.
Great. Questions or comments? I don't propose that we vote on this tonight, of course, but we have?
You may want to look at this and digest it a little bit and then have any additional questions. I'd be more than happy to do that, but let me go back to the timeline for just a second if you don't mind. Now, I also think the middle of September next year, where I do have the wrong date, it should be 2013, you all need to be looking at the specific objectives for the next year's evaluation because they, you know, once we get, once we get the data from the state as far as the objectives, they'll set new goals and different things like that. So, we need to look at that as far as inclusion in the instrument for the following year. So, that's something you need to be doing, I think, at that point. But what we propose to do is by October 15th, send each of the board members the full evaluation form, just like we sent them to all the administrators. They'll come directly to you at your mailing address. You will take them, complete them, fill them out, get them back to us, hopefully by December the 1st, sooner, I hope. But one thing we're suggesting you do is to schedule an individual meeting with the director during that time to sit down, if you've got any concerns or questions about anything on the evaluation, to have a one-on-one conversation with the director and if you've got concerns, voice them at that time. And we also find that that clears up some misconception. That's one of the things for a superintendent evaluation in West Tennessee that we determined last year that it wasn't working well because there wasn't that contact. So, they all decided to do that and meet with the director of schools this year on an individual basis so they'll have a good understanding of what has been accomplished. And I think that's crucial and I would encourage you to do that. Of course, if you get the evaluation forms back to us, we can very quickly turn those around, give you a summative report, come back and talk to you about what we discovered in your evaluation process and hopefully answer any questions you have and get you set up for what's going to happen the year after that. And then, follow this basic schedule on an annual basis.
Okay, questions? Discussion? Grant?
My question, a statement, I guess. I assume the high-performing systems like we have, like we are, they have very, very little room for improvement compared to someone, a system that was, say, a little below average. And you just, it's hard to make some big improvements if you're near the top.
Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Odom? Any comment on that? I'm sorry, I keep dragging him over to the microphone. He's much more of an expert on what the state wants than I am, so I'd like for him to respond to that.
This model is so different and what it really amounts to, while there is some state measures, every school is actually competing against themselves for improvement. It's a gap closure thing. The federal waiver required a 50% reduction in gaps over eight years. And so, that was six and a quarter percent per year, that you, whatever your gaps are. So, in essence, we're kind of competing against ourselves with a measure. Are we growing? Are we measuring? In the professional learning community environment, which I hope we're into and where I wanted to lead us to, Mr. Gill's been there, we started it, you measure what you do by the student outcomes. It's not maybe what you've done and how it looks. If that didn't produce results with students, then you still haven't succeeded. So, I am comfortable being measured against those things that this system's going to be measured against. And I don't, when I say because there's so many objectives, you're not going to meet everyone every year, maybe you have to go 3.1% this year, you go 3% or 2.8, you will not have met that objective. So, but I mean, that's the differences in student. This is, this is a difficult thing that they have us under in this waiver. I mean, this is not an easy thing. You want something hard and fast. It is hard and fast, but it is as fair as it's going to be for everybody else in the state of Tennessee under this waiver.
We breathe a sigh of relief when we found out that we're going to get a waiver from No Child Left Behind, but then we got the annual measure objective. So, I don't know that there's that much relief involved in it, but we've still got ways to go and those are, as Mr. Odom said, are set up on a specific basis over the next few years. So, I think it gives us specific objectives to meet, things that we're looking for, and it gives you a chance to very objectively measure how far along he's taking in the school district as well.
I have two questions, and the second one, I'm going to make it second because it's Mr. Odom again, so sorry. But you've said staff and personnel relationships, and yet, the survey that you have goes to administrators. Is there a survey tool for staff and personnel?
No.
What would you?
I would think that would be unwieldy with the number of personnel that you have, and most of them do not work directly with Mr. Odom. What we're looking at measuring is the perceptions of the people who do work directly with Mr. Odom. There's several layers between he and each of the line item teachers, and I don't know that that would provide information that would be helpful. I mean, there may be something out there that you could do in a situation like that, but it's not something we'd recommend simply because we're not sure that the information gets out to all those people.
Okay. Is that to say, then, that those things are to be considered more for the assistant superintendents and central office staff? Or are you saying that these are criteria that are system-wide employee criteria and you've just got to make your best assumption?
We're thinking, we were thinking more central office staff and then principals and assistant principals in the schools because they do work directly as part of the management team. So, it's going to be a pretty good-sized group anyway and it's going to be spread throughout the entire district. But people who do work directly with the superintendent.
I guess I hear two different things. People who work with, you know, throughout the district and yet, central office staff. Central office staff is a centralized group of people that could be surveyed. People throughout the system, I agree with you, that's too broad a group that would be unwieldy to survey.
Well, we're talking about not just all central office staff, but all central office administrators, people that are director of this, director of that, people who are involved in the instructional program themselves and who work directly under the direction of the superintendent and the chain of command. And that does go all the way down to principals because, as you know, the director of schools chooses the principals and has contract with all the principals. So, we think that principals and assistant principals should rightly be included with system-wide type positions that are held here in central office. Not everybody in central office, just the people that are working on the instructional program and working specifically with trying to help Mr. Odom accomplish these goals for the district.
Okay, then, because of something you just said there, let me clarify again. Would you recommend Appendix A, then, for principals and assistant principals or only principals?
No, principals and assistant principals.
Principals and assistants?
Yeah, as well as key players within central office. And that may be something that you and Mr. Odom would like to work out as far as who we send that to. We'll send those to whomever the board ultimately decides should be surveyed on that. But we're looking at those folks that are working in an administrative capacity, be they principals, assistant principals, or central office staff who have system-wide responsibilities.
Perfect. Understood now. Oh, Mr. Odom, if we're setting criteria in October, are we setting criteria behind a ball that is already rolling? Or are we setting criteria ahead of a school year based on the fact that we finally have gotten the data? Over and over, I've heard reports of, well, we're waiting on the data, we're waiting on the data, we've seen some of the data, we've anticipated the data, we've made plans, you know, based on our expectations of what the data is probably going to be, and it feels like that all of those plans are already in place, in fact, even before the school year starts, but certainly before a mid-October place where the board would be setting criteria. It feels like that we would be setting criteria that's already in motion. Is there any validity to that?
Well, the state has set the criteria for most of that, what we're going to do. The nice piece about this is, when it comes back to you, when the state releases a report, and I'm not going to conjecture when they release it, but typically, anywhere, because they have to notify the public and all, it could be late summer, it could be September. So, that's why he was saying, let's look at the October or something like that to make sure that it's in place. I mean, graduation rates, for example, I saw a date today that you have to make all changes this year by September the 4th. So, obviously, you're not going to have a graduation rate for this year published that quickly. The nice thing about this and the reason I suggested to do this to Mr. Bennett is, in areas we're not meeting, you're going to be able to see it. And you'll see the area at the time when we're developing budgets and looking at it. So, it's not just me here, it's you giving a chance to be a part of the whole system of where we have issues and needs. The score, while you're evaluating me and that, you're also evaluating our system's total performance in that area. And that may drive your budgets or your needs. That's what you need to do to be an effective board member. You need that picture.
Let me speak to why I picked that date. And I picked it out of the air because frankly, the only variable in this that we can't control is when we get information from the state. And I thought that hopefully by October the 15th, we not only have the report from the prior year back, but also benchmarking guidelines for the year to come. That's what I'm hoping. Now, that can be modified if the data comes in soon, but I was just picking that date because I needed to pick some date, and that's why, that's why it shows that one.
My concern is that in the culture of the schools, in the temperament of our schools, it seems like that those things are adjusted and put in place more in the, quite frankly, the May category where those decisions are made as to who the administrators will be and, you know, the principals are evaluated. And if the board were to weigh in on, we'd like to see a plan for school uniforms across the district or something of that. Would it be the appropriate timeframe to introduce that in October or November? Or would it be appropriate to introduce it in the spring in anticipation for a coming school year?
In the process of the waiver, the way the state has designed this, it'll have to be revisited every year. We actually, to let you know, this last week, I saw new AMOs for English language learners because the state had failed to include T1 and T2. We have already given the tests, they were sent off for scanning, and we've got goals we've got to meet, and we've already sent the test off, they've already been tested. But this summer sometime, apparently, the system has to come up again for each school and for the district. We'll have to set new goals for 12, 13. I cannot give you a date for that. That depends upon the testing and that sort of thing. But I certainly think with around the October timeframe, we'll have that pieced together. When you look at data, please don't look at one little piece at one period of time. Look at trend analysis. I've learned over my years, and Mr. Gill will tell you, too, you look for a trend analysis in a school, in a school system, it's what's done over a period of time that makes the difference. If you knee-jerk reaction to little things, different groups of kids, certain factors go into that. But longitudinal analysis will give you the information you need to make, the decisions you need to make.
I guess, again, my concern is not in the expectations that the state is putting on us. I appreciate the inclusion of those state expectations because I certainly wanted some measurable points to be evaluatable. And they are there and I appreciate that. But where the board would want to create an expectation beyond the state's expectation, a local expectation, a, an expectation that is not tied to student performance or testing data, would that expectation of additional community involvement be appropriate in the month of November or December? Or would it be appropriate in the months of April and May so that it could be implemented in the coming school year?
If you're looking at adding to the state requirements, I would certainly think that that could be done late spring and by July 1st of the next school year. If you wanted to include something like that, it would be reasonable to do that at that time because it's not dependent on state data. It's dependent on what the local board wants. So, if you wanted to do that, I wouldn't see a problem with including it at that point in time and then including it in the evaluation instrument by July 1st of any particular year.
Okay. Other discussion? Questions for Mr. Bennett? So, Joyce, our next meeting is when? Do we have another one in May? Probably not.
No.
So, I'm putting you on the spot, sorry. At our, whatever our first, we only meet once in June, so why don't we decide this at our June meeting? Does that sound okay to everybody? So, look this over, not only the form, but the timeline, and our goal will be to adopt it at our next meeting.
If you all have any questions for me, if you'll please email those, I will email my response on your question to the entire board so you can see what it was and keep you updated on all that.
Okay.
We have a responsibility, both in contract and policy, to create expectations for the director of schools. Will we also set those at our June meeting? Or will they be vacant until this process?
These are the expectations, is my understanding, right? When I, I mean, I believe I've heard Mr. Bennett say that that would fulfill our contractual obligation to provide goals for the superintendent. So, you're asking about additional goals?
Would these be all of it?
I'd say if you wanted to propose some, the next meeting would be the time to do that.
Yeah, since the plan is to approve this by July 1st, if there was additional things that wanted to be included, that would be the appropriate time. And it's not a problem. If you've got things as a board, be more than happy to include those as part of the evaluation format, too.
Okay. Well, Mr. Bennett, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
No problem. Like Mr. Odom, he was instrumental.
Okay, number seven. That's it.
General purpose school budget. There you go. Grant, and first, let me say, Mr. Sandvik had to leave. We put this up here to discuss it. I know Dr. Burns, I didn't tell him, but obviously, he's the person that has most knowledge with respect to amendments, and it's the time of the year that we amend a lot of money, but he had to go to budget. So, if you have any real specific questions with respect to these amendments, I'd ask that you hold them tomorrow night and I'll answer them as best as I can. First, grants and donation, this amendment budgets $142,360 in grants, donations and other revenues to the specific budget lines covered by the revenues, net expenditures equal the revenues. And we'll recommend that you do that. Go through them and if you've got any questions.
Yeah, I want you to go through all of them.
Utilities and transportation, this amendment reduces the budget for natural gas, count 7216434 by $221,700 and increases water and sewer by $25,000. Transportation contracts with other agencies by $21,700 and contract with vehicle owners $175,000. The last one is, $175 is just an increase in fuel costs to the bus drivers. The 21-7 is for, we had to bring another bus on with a... The 217 is for, we had to bring another bus on with, uh, who is it, Shirley? We had to bring another bus on because there were too many students at Rutherford Academy, I believe that's what it was. And obviously, the top two speak for themselves. Substitute teachers. This amendment increases the budget for substitute teachers throughout the general purpose school budget by $323,000. The amendment is being funded by reallocating available salary and benefit dollars for the line items across the budget. And we recommend that you do that. You know, as we talk about that, it's, obviously, there could be many factors that contribute to that. You know, we have a big workforce. Teachers, for example, get X number of days during the course of the year. Probably, the load this year was really a burden on teachers, and I suspect that resulted in more absences. The CTE program, they have to pull teachers out, but we budget for that. But it's, you think we can put our thumb on, or our finger on what caused that this year, Paula?
Well, we also have a number of, a large number of certified substitutes, and they're paid slightly more.
That's a good point.
We have some that's in long-term leagues in which a teacher is taking sick time, but they must use a substitute without leaving. But I think that's also...
It just kind of, it's kind of stuck out as a pretty high number, the 323 in comparison to previous years. But anyway. D, unemployment. This amendment increases the budget for unemployment compensation throughout the general purpose school budget by $165,000. The amendment is being funded by reallocating available salary and benefit dollars from the line items across the budget. And we recommend that you do that. It's my understanding, and Angel and Paula can speak to that, that the federal government's become a little more lenient with respect to what they qualify, when a person qualifies for unemployment. And, for example, if somebody leaves us, takes a job somewhere else, and they lose that job, we still are partly responsible for their unemployment. So, yeah, it is. That's a net result of $165,000 amended. Insurance. This amendment real allocates a total of $576,626 in already budgeted salaries and benefits throughout the general purpose school budget. The primary purpose of the amendment is to add a net $504,780 in medical insurance in order to make sure that all the insurance lines have sufficient funding for the 2011, 2012 fiscal year. The amendment is being funded by reallocating available budgeted salary and benefit dollars from the line items across the budget. This amendment involves no new funds, just already budgeted dollars. And we'll recommend that you increase the budget for medical insurance by $504,780 and other employee benefits, $70,846. And to fund a total of $575,626 in expenditures, by reallocating available salary and benefit dollars as presented. It's pretty interesting, as you recall, when we talked about, in our budget meetings, next year, our contribution to insurance has gone up a little over $3 million. Plus, what we're passing on to the employees is being increased substantially, too. To the point where the 2% raise they'll get this year won't even cover their increase in insurance. So insurance is, needless to say, crippling many businesses and many school systems across this country. And, you know, and that's when I read in the paper, and I actually got a meeting with the mayor Thursday to go over our budget. I called him and wanted to make sure that he knew where we were coming from. You know, when you look at our increases in our budget this year, 3 million insurance, 5 million for the new teacher salary raise. And essentially, that's what is it, eight? The other three or four million is coming with growth and mandated changes by the state, all those new teaching positions. So it's unreasonable to think that we're not going to need additional money to pull that off. But anyway, one of the big culprits is insurance.
Grant, you had something?
Private sector's having the same problems, and you talk to anybody in any industry right now, it's just a tough time.
It is. Okay, technology and other. This amendment real allocates existing budgeted funds to address three areas. $170,000 for technology budget, $10,000 to pay the coordinator or retired teacher of the virtual enterprise program, and $25,000 for bus cameras and parts. The technology amendment adjusts as part of the budget in order better reflect the way actual technology expenditures are being recorded. More items are being charged to function 72, 810, Central, and Other instead of 71, 100, regular instruction, as prices have dropped, more items qualify as other materials and supplies.
Any overall questions on those?
The unemployment amendment. Have we seen an increase in the number of teachers that have left us? It's not so much an unemployment thing, but resignation? I, I think the answer is yes, because of, you know, the more stringent, but retirees were up this year, but voluntary departures as well?
Actually, it's, we are the smallest number of non-renewals in a long time. And I don't know that retirees are up too much.
I actually don't have an accurate count in front of me, I would have to check that. But I don't think it's much more than any other year.
No.
Other questions? Don?
What's this coordinator? What's your coordinator up?
It's the lady, isn't it the lady at Blackman High School? What number is that?
Doesn't the state reimburse the one?
Yeah, they do. If you recall, if you recall, a few years ago, Ms. Boyd, we agreed to allow her to be the state coordinator for virtual enterprise, and that's what it is.
That's what it is.
Yeah, and Mr. Odom, like he says, they reimburse us a big part of that money.
And $25,000 for bus cameras, that's, that's just an ongoing thing, upkeep of that issue.
Okay, eight, I assume we'll do tomorrow?
And also nine is tomorrow.
And 10?
10 is tomorrow.
10's tomorrow. 11, we can talk about.
Local consolidated application for federal funding under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The local consolidated grant application for fiscal year 2013.01 includes the following components. Title I, Part A, improving the achievement, academic achievement for disadvantaged. Title II, Part A, teacher and principal training recruitment. Title III, Part A, English language acquisition, language enhancement, and academic achievement. And this is part of the annual budget that we submit for approval, and we recommend that you do that.
Normally, chairman wives would want some kind of comment on that, wouldn't you?
I think so. A detailed report on, Grant?
What, what type of money could be put in there if possible?
Oh, Jeff's not here. Amy, you know what your budget is? What's your title budget this year?
Uh, we actually just received that preliminary yes from the FAS, but we don't give the official one in time for July. Uh, is about 4.6 million.
And there's some other money. And you know what, Anne's, I don't, I don't know. Jeff could tell you that tomorrow night, though, if you want to know.
Like everything else, everything's getting tougher, you know?
Yeah, it's been reduced some.
Yeah. I wanted to take the opportunity to just understand this better. I had a conversation at a school level that if an individual school rises above a certain level, then they have to be Title I. Is that correct? Or how, how does that work?
We get so much money, but in order to qualify for title funds, it's based on your free reduced population. We have chosen for many, many, many years to limit that. We don't have enough funds to go with K-12, so we've chosen to intervene at the elementary level. At the same time, when we get some, when we get high poverty middle schools, we've had a local money, going back and done double dose of math and academy reading and some of these things. But most of our title money is committed to elementary school. Based on their free reduced population.
Okay. What is it that generates title money to come in? Is, I mean, I know it's this application right here, but what is key on this application to bring and get in?
I guess it's overall. Amy, can you answer? I mean, I can answer, but you knew better.
Actually, the money is generated by former federal levels by poverty according to the census. It's generated at the school level, at the state end of the school level by free reduced population, is what you...
And is there a threshold that they're looking for? Or is it just, you know, for, is it one-to-one for every student?
There are several ways to look at it as far as what schools are served. It can be schools that are over the district poverty level. It could be schools that are over 35% poverty. It could be schools, and your first question, you're going with, if schools are over 75% poverty, they must be served with title one funds, otherwise they're only the middle or high school. So there are several benchmarks and several options that you can just, that you can...
I guess that was what I had been given some heads up on as we take a look at issues in the fall, that this occasion may be something we want to take note of and say, it's a 75% threshold, then, that if a school goes beyond that one free and reduced, we have to supply some funds. I thought that was important to understand.
Okay, other discussion? All right, number 12.
Riverdale High School Green Roof Project. Mr. Tom Nolan has requested permission to construct a green roof project at Riverdale High School. Project will be installed on top of a covered walkway standing from D Hall towards the annex closest to the parking. A drainage subgrade root, root barrier? Who typed that? Filter fabric, water retention fabric, soil and plants will be installed. The installation cost is $10,800 will be donated by Landscape Support Services. A $300 grant will be used for the metal roof edging. Plants will be donated by the Riverdale High School Agriculture Department. Riverdale High School Fade, Friends Against Destruction of the Environment Chapter, will maintain the green roof. There'll be no cost to the Rutherford County School Board, and that'll be the recommendation.
Got that right.
Yeah, root is the bottom part of the plant?
I understand what it is. Pardon me.
Okay, well, you seem a little confused there.
I haven't slipped up in a pretty good while.
Discussion about that? That sounds like a cool project.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just more curious than anything else, is, is, how does that qualify as green? I mean, I, I, I'm sure it'll look nice. Where's the benefit to the...
That is such an easy question. I'm going to turn it over to my assistant.
And I'm all for it. Just curious.
Well, normally, you would put this on roofs, and it would act as insulation on part of the building. But since this is the first one, we don't want to interfere with any roofs that are over building and over occupied areas. So we're putting it on canopy as a trial run to see how it works, see if they'll actually maintain it. It's a very small section, so we'll just see it, how it goes with it.
Okay.
And the green part of it would be that it's natural material. And if it were over an occupied area, it would prevent transfer.
You said, it's not my question. I couldn't figure why it would insulate underneath that canopy that ends out that way that's, it's open air.
Right.
Okay.
How much weight?
It's gonna be the same thing. Of course, the soil is pretty dense, it's pretty heavy.
Well, it is, but in those, that particular canopy is an older canopy, and it has a lot heavier steel in it. And it is steel instead of aluminum, so we think it'll carry it. We believe it'll carry it.
Just the same, then add human weight for maintaining it, or observing it, or whatever? Do we have any concerns there?
We don't.
Okay. And how about fall protection? Is there any possibility that even our agriculture students may be up there?
Uh, there's a possibility that they will. I assume that the people that are managing it at the school level will take care of their kids.
Okay. Other questions? Don?
I said, that's assuming a lot.
Other questions about the project? Okay, number 13.
Approval of non-renewal for non-tenured teachers. Board must authorize director school recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers at the conclusion of the 2011, 2012 school year. And recommendations authorize director school recommendation for non-renewal of non-tenured teachers conclusion of 2011, 2012 school year.
You have a list of those names, but that was your second mistake tonight, Mr. Gill. I mean, I believe you skipped number 13.
It is. I'm going to blame all this on poor vision. Oh, I did. Pardon me. Yeah, naming Riverdale High School band room pursuant to policy 3210. The director may make recommendations to the board for naming portions of the school campus. Mr. Tom Nolan, on behalf of the Riverdale High School Band and Booster, Riverdale High Band Booster submitted a request to rename the Riverdale High School Band Room the Ronald S. Mears Band Hall. Mr. Mears, 43-year teaching career, 30 years at Riverdale High School, has been a driving force in music and education, not only at Riverdale High, but across the state and region. He's been actively involved in the Professional Association for the Advancement of Students in the profession of teaching music. And everything is in compliance with policy, and we recommend that you rename the Riverdale High School Band Room the Ronald S. Mears Band Hall.
That's very well deserved, too. Questions or comments? Aaron?
I'm a fan of Mr. Mears and also band programs in general, but I have to ask the question. We have stadiums and fields that are named in honor. Do we have any internal rooms, or, or halls, or facilities? Are we crossing a barrier, only that we do it intentionally?
I know we've had some media centers, like you say, stadiums, baseball field. I don't know of any rooms.
Obviously, the media center would be inside the building.
Okay, we do have media centers that are...
There's at least one or two that I know of, at least two.
A library added at Rockville.
Rockville and Renee Jackson, and I think there are others, too.
Okay, all right.
Okay, 15.
Reduction in force. This is just information only. Due to budget constraints, the system is implementing reduction in force in business teaching positions. These positions have been identified for elimination due to reduced student enrollment. Total of four high school positions will be eliminated. Every effort is being made to transfer or reassign teachers if possible. The decision regarding which employees will be released will be based upon a composite of the following criteria. Effectiveness of teaching and related professional responsibilities evidenced by teacher evaluation, adaptability to other assignments, evidence of professional growth, as well as specialized or advanced training, previous history of grade levels and subject areas taught, and type, length of, and quality of service made to the teaching profession in school system. And a little subsequent history to that, we met Mr. Odom and Ms. Barnes and myself. Recognize it's going to be a lean year with regards to budget. Have really tried to dig and scratch and claw a way to finding out where these high schools are overstaffed. And it's, in fairness to them, the enrollments change over time. Whereby, they don't, you know, they, you know, kids don't attend a certain class or a certain field anymore, they go other places. And we had a lot of them that were just put in supervisory roles and those kind of deals. And in, in connection with this, we asked the high school principals to identify two or three other positions that they might, could give up, so that we could start cutting positions whenever possible. We, we, Mr. Odom, myself, and Paula monitored these closely over the years. But I know some of the principals came back and said, hey, I could cut, you know, we can cut loose this, we can cut these. So in addition to these four positions that we phased out, and our obligation is to make sure that we notify you guys that we're doing that, we also have transferred some CTE people within the county in the last few weeks, where they had, were overstaffed and... within the county in the last few weeks, where they had, were overstaffed in school A and school B needed a position. So, you know, we've saved eight, nine, ten positions probably by doing this.
Okay, discussion?
I would think we want to make it clear, though, that we, we do support CTE classes, and it's just a matter of enrollments. It's unfortunate, as much as we hear from the public that we need to be providing these kinds of classes and so forth, it is unfortunate to me that we don't get more students that will enroll in the classes, and when enrollment is down, we can't support that. So I, I, I think as a board, we need to rec, be recognized that we do support CTE classes that will be properly enrolled, and we'll staff them as best we possibly can when those enrollments warrant that.
That's a good point. Two or three things occur to me when you say that, though, and we've had this discussion for a lo, a long time. First of all, what they take changes, you know, culinary arts, some marketing, virtual enterprise, what else?
Criminal justice.
Criminal justice, those are now the courses they want to take. But also, a certain amount of that is, is on the shoulder of the teacher.
Yeah.
To encourage kids and to, to, to make it a desirable course to take. And sometimes, if the teachers aren't selling that course and aren't making it interesting and aren't making it a viable opportunity for kids, they'll, they'll bail on them that fast, which I don't know if that's the case with these business courses.
Wayne?
It says four high school positions. Is this at four different high schools?
Yeah, yeah, they're spread out across county.
Okay. Other discussion on that item?
Well, any, any of those, some of them may be retiring already, or it's just not necessarily that's been affected?
I don't think any of them are retiring, and we just, we just phased them out based on the fact they didn't have any kids. And like I say, they're going to pull, and hopefully, there'll be some other opportunity for them.
Okay, sixteen.
Dismissal of tenured teacher. Board has been provided with a memorandum containing charges against Richard Kimberly, who is a tenured teacher with the board. Mr. Kimberly has been suspended without pay pending board action. The board sustains these charges. Mr. Kimberly will be presented with a copy of the charges and a statement of his rights under Tennessee law. Recommend that you sustain the charges against Richard Kimberly as presented.
Discussion? If you haven't had a chance to read it on the tab, please do so by tomorrow. General discussion?
Yes, sir. I had one thought. There's one portion in here, I read it earlier. Recommendation. These allegations, if true, warrant his dismissal. I was a little uncomfortable with if true. We're taking a definitive action, and yet there's still a, a caveat in the language. If it's appropriate, I'm fine with that, I just.
Under state law, that's part of the procedure to dismiss a tenured teacher. The board, at this point, has to assume the facts to be true, and the way the law and statutes are, is incumbent upon the board to assume the charges are true, and the board then determines if these charges are true, do you believe those warrant dismissal? So, and that's kind of a caveat in the, in the law, but that's the way it comes to the board. And that's by virtue of state statute.
So we're not deciding guilt or innocence, we're assuming guilt, and we're deciding whether or not this.
Whether these charges, if true, sustain appropriate dismissal. The tenured teacher then has the right to request hearings and has other rights that are afforded to them under state law. So that's why you have that peculiar language that you, which is unusual, which I understand your question about that, it, it is odd.
Okay.
But that's just the way the statute has been, it's kind of the, how we got into where we are today with respect to the law.
Understood. Other questions? All right, general discussion.
Aaron? Chairman, this is my second year to be on the board in May, and it really seems like May is a critical time period with respect to principal evaluations and the plans, both review of what has taken place in the school year and the initiation of plans for the coming school year. I'm a little bit frustrated that the expectations and evaluation for the board are not in place at this time to have some influence on this critical time period. That being said, in general terms, I hear from my constituency, as well as people in, within our system, that there are more ways for us to accomplish the tasks that we're working on than, than the ways that we're, that we're always choosing to do it. Specifically, sometimes the right thing to do is to lead with absolute expectations and no compromise and no failures, zero tolerance for failure. And certainly, where our students and their safety are involved, that's the absolute correct way to lead. But in so many ways of frustration that this year has been with transition with our faculty, there are ones who have expressed to me a, a lack of availability for input and, and, and helping their cause. In principal evaluations from my board seat, I wanted to express that as much as possible, the collaborative environment that Mr. Odom hopes that we are dedicated to, that we continue to be dedicated to that collaborative environment, not only in the instructional areas, but beyond the instructional areas, in areas of culture, in areas of day-to-day life, a multitude of areas, that there would be additional collaboration between faculty and administration.
Okay, I don't think I understand really what you're getting at. Maybe I'm, are you asking for a specific action, or there's a, is there something that, you say you're frustrated, what is it that we should have done, or you wish we would have done that we did not do?
I wish we had expectations for the director of schools as they go into the principal evaluations. Those expectations would not just be empirical data or testing, but also cultural ideas. It's my experience that in the month of May, there'll be principal evaluations, and they will not only take a look at what happened in eleven, twelve, but make plans for twelve, thirteen. If that's an accurate expectation, then it's a very critical time period, and what happens specifically in Laverne in twelve, thirteen, in anticipation of the opening of Stewart's Creek High School, and what impact it would have on the Laverne community, does not have a clear board influence. And I'm going to limit my board influence to a generality of a cooperative, collective environment that seeks input from all directions. Because I don't want to try and micromanage, I don't want to cross that line that is laid out for board members to not get involved in. I'm just going to say, I sure hope we're listening to all sides. Perhaps that's an appropriate comment, perhaps other board members would share with me their feelings.
I still don't know what you're talking about, but, yeah.
Okay.
It's asking me like you're talking around something.
I have a desire that in the fall of twenty thirteen, that we would not open just Stewart's Creek High School by itself, but that we would, in essence, open multiple new high schools, giving a facelift and, and a, a shot in the arm to those high schools that might be challenged by the impact of Stewart's Creek opening. Those things can't be done in a short timeframe. It's gonna take quite a bit of planning in order to do that. If those plans are underway, I hope that those plans will be collaborative and will involve the community, the faculty, and a wide range of people. And I would have to imagine that those plans might take place late in the month of May.
Are you talking about zoning?
Zoning will create a situation that we are all aware of, and we've, and we've alluded to, as we interviewed for a director of schools, the socioeconomic impact that will take place on the Laverne and Smyrna community by opening Stewart's Creek. When that occurs, what will be done at Laverne, or at Smyrna, or even elsewhere, to offset what, what impact there is to those areas? I think that that is something that the board should consider. I think in due time, it is something we will consider in rezoning, but I think that additional efforts will be made ahead of that.
May I say something?
Please.
What I suggest is that whatever suggestion we as a board have for those campuses, that we go to Mr. Gill, we, we go to Mr. Odom and share our vision of, of what we think those campuses should look like in that transition period. So that's what I would recommend, is that you actually have an audience with our present director and our new director, and, and I'll do the same thing, you know, for those campuses. So that's what I would suggest.
I think that we're stronger if we would all work together, and I'm un, I'm unable to converse with my fellow board members because of sunshine laws outside of this room. So I would appreciate other board members to share their ideas and their perspective as to how this could be overcome, or something, something additional could be achieved.
You know, Mr. Odom and I have talked about, I don't think there's any revelation saying it's gonna be hard zoning the high school. I mean, there are, are going to be poverty issues with respect to Laverne and probably Smyrna. And we've talked about the very thing you're talking about. I believe we've talked about maybe creating Laverne High School as a, you know, as having a, a separate music school, or a separate, some kind of curriculum-focused school that might attract kids back to the school. I, I mean, I, I think that's, it would be difficult to pull off, to the point where you're gonna cut, have a lot of kids choose to come back to Laverne in lieu of, or Smyrna in lieu of going to a brand-new two thousand seat comprehensive high school that's gonna have top-flight courses. But I mean, there is dialogue with regards to what you're saying. It's just, you know, and I don't want the fact that it's going to be really difficult to do to be the obstacle that prevents us from doing that. But there is, there are discussions on our part with respect of what we might do. And it's really important to me, I'm from that end of county, too, I want Smyrna and Laverne to remain successful. Went to Smyrna High School, worked at Laverne High School, and we're trying to do what we can, and, and I, I kind of want to echo what Wayne said, I mean, if you've got ideas, we're receptive to ideas, good ideas. And so if, I mean, if you want to be more specific at a later time, or Mr. Odom and I'd be happy to meet and hear your ideas, because you may, you may have an idea that we haven't come up with.
And we could certainly discuss those in a board meeting. I mean, if that, you know, particularly after you've had a chance to talk to Mr. Gill and Odom. Yeah.
There are some economic challenges in the works. Of course, there's a lot of new industries coming in to different parts of Riverdale County, and some that's gone south. Nissan is, is coming on in some areas, so these things are gonna have an impact on, on what we do there, because that length of time, there's, there's gonna be a, a lot of new employees be coming in from outside area, where they choose to live, it's gonna, gonna be somewhat determined by where they want to go to school and things of that nature. So that's gonna be some outside things like that, that it's gonna be a big determinant, too. I mean, you've got to look at capacity. But I, I would agree that we want to certainly help Laverne as much as we can, to certainly not have anybody going away from that school, and I think that we should be able to work on that, it's just gonna be pretty difficult, because it's gonna be, shall we say, last-minute decisions made probably on that because of the way the economic climate is. It could take off, or it could maybe stagnate.
Tim?
I'm very sensitive to the need that will be there to do. I, I, I think we're all aware of that, I don't think there's any secrets in the thing. I, I don't see doing something today or tomorrow is, is there. I think we need to see how it plays itself out, be prepared and do, but, you know, like Mr. Gill, I'm, my first high school teaching position was at Laverne High School, there's not a place that's more dear to me than Laverne, and that would include Oakland. So I want to do the best I can for Laverne, but I think, to me, it's very premature to be making any solid plan today for what we're gonna see with zoning. I think it's gonna be part of the zoning process. We're gonna do, I think there were seven or eight different meetings gonna be there. We're gonna be, we're gonna be inundated with ideas of how things should be handled and done, and I think we're gonna have to show sensitivity to that. But I, today, I don't know what I can do to do that, other than be prepared to recognize that there's gonna need to be some additional staffing, some additional programs to compensate if that's where we're at, or for schools that, that kind of fit in that situation. And, and I think we can look back historically and see that Oakland was put in that situation, and there were some things that, that were done to take, to take care of that. And I think we need to be as proactive as we can, but frankly, I, I don't see, I don't see May, June, the time to do that, I don't see that in the timeframe.
Let me suggest to you, then, a timeframe that might help you to understand what I'm trying to express. The IB program at Oakland, I think, was instrumental in bringing a lot of pride and, and success into that school's character. And that program did not come in the course of a three-month time period. You know, it had to be researched, it had to be budgeted for, it had to be qualified for, and yet, there came a point when finally it was in place and it was effective at improving the environment. We can see on the horizon that the fall of twenty thirteen, there is likely to be a need, and we'll hold it to Smyrna and Laverne, at Smyrna and Laverne High School. If we were to do something as bold or dramatic as the IB program, which, because it's so familiar, it doesn't seem that bold or dramatic, it would take planning up to and including events and, and efforts right now in order to be in place for the fall of twenty thirteen, so that Laverne and Smyrna are viewed as something attractive, and Stewart's Creek is equally attractive. And to the community, we've rebranded two schools, and it is almost as if we're opening three new schools. A new Laverne, a new Smyrna, and a new Stewart's Creek. And these three schools are vibrant and healthy and moving forward. If those plans are in the works, I would request the board's involvement in them, formally, informally, at, at whatever level. I would also hope for a broad community involvement, so that the character of the community is reflected in whatever changes are made.
Mr. Gill, you got any response to that, or are your plans or discussions at a point where they could be?
I mean, first of all, I still have hopes that Laverne and Smyrna will be vibrant and be a, be a good school. The world will be down, I think there'll be opportunities to do what Mr. Tackett said, maybe put some additional staffing in there. I don't know that I, and, and you know, the IB is a good thing, and it has, in fact, probably added to, to the perception of Oakland being a good school, and I think it has contributed to good things. Now, there's not a large number of kids in the IB program, I don't think, I mean, I don't think that's a cure-all. I do think that there are some other ideas that we've suggested that might, and I mean, they're in the preliminary stages, that might get things moving in a, in the, in the kind of direction that you're asking for. But all these things, you know, But all these things, you know, we're in the middle of budget, and all of them are attached to financing too. I mean, I think it's probably a little late, a late from a budget perspective, but again, I think we go back and, I'd be happy to, you know, Don and I can talk some more, and Ms. Barnes, and I'm sure we're going to, it's just that we're all pretty overwhelmed right now. Matter of fact, since Mr. Odom is going to be the new director, he and Ms. Barnes have been doing principal contracts for next year and getting all that ready, and I'm working with budget and dealing with, unfortunately, a lot of personnel issues right now. But, I mean, I think it's going to take a little more time than, you know, just an overnight fix for both of them, but, I mean, I respect your ideas.
I agree. More than overnight fixes, and that's why I'm raising the issue now, that perhaps it would continue to be a board discussion, not just the responsibilities of rezoning, but also the responsibilities of making sure that those are vibrant and successful programs infused with, you know, be they small, they still give an identity to that school. The IB program may be low enrollment, but it gives that sense of pride. These are the ethereal things that are hard to track, maybe they cost, maybe they don't, but they give you some identity. You redesign the uniforms, and all of a sudden, the team plays a little harder, because they just, they just like the new design. And that can be done hastily and haphazardly, or it can be done with an appropriate amount of planning, and I'm asking for that appropriate amount of planning, encouraging the appropriate amount of planning, and encouraging all board members to use it. Mr. Tackett, you have a world of perspective here, having your time at Oakland High School to weigh in on this, and I think that it is so important, and I'm not calling you out by any means, I'm asking that our staff, our principals, our director, please involve the board. The community of Laverne goes to the county commission and rakes their nails on the chalkboard and questions whether or not they are appropriately represented. And so in that respect, I am raising my hand publicly and saying, please, let the community of Laverne have some input and have some say as we make these decisions and make these plans, because an ounce of prevention is better than trying to fix it later. And I want, I want us to be successful. I want us to be successful.
Terry.
I guess my place to do it there, you're talking about Laverne being represented appropriately. From my perspective, I look at Laverne just like I do Oakland, anywhere else, wherever they are. So I disagree with you as far as, you know, right now, you've got yourself, I think you've got Mr. Gill and Mr. Blair, you've got representation down there. Now, what they're wanting is one representative, that doesn't make any sense to me.
I agree with you.
So, you know, I think the comments you're making on that, I disagree with. I take offense to it, I guess.
Take offense to what?
The comment. It's like the board right here doesn't do anything for Laverne.
I'm not suggesting that at all, Terry.
That's basically what you just said.
No, no, sir. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that Laverne perceives that they are inadequately represented. If that's an affront to anyone, it's an affront to the individual that resides in Laverne.
I don't know how they, how they can say that.
And certainly, from the person that resides in Laverne, I agree. I don't understand how they can say that either.
So, I mean, what else we do?
I'm asking that we make a extra effort to include the people of Laverne as we make plans for the fall of 2013.
I'm hoping, you know, they give me some ideas. I've got some ideas myself, but I think it's, it's my first opinion, I think we're going to have to wait until we get into the zone a little bit more. I'll say that, you know, when we do do this rezoning, I feel confident in saying that Laverne down there, we're going to put a whole lot more resources into it.
Yeah, and they certainly have an opportunity during the multiple open forums or community meetings during the zoning process. If you're suggesting a separate meeting, maybe, I mean, to discuss plans to adjust the curriculum, is that sort of what you're getting at, or add additional programming, or...I mean, I...
I mean, all.
I think that'd be okay. I don't think we're ready for that yet, because we don't, our plans aren't far enough along. I mean, if we had a meeting right now and said, what do you think? I don't think a lot of useful information would come out of that. Or maybe it would, I don't know. Maybe they have ideas about what they'd like to say.
Do they?
Pardon?
Do they have ideas as to what they would like to remake those schools?
Beats me.
Okay.
I don't know, do they? You're their representative. I would be surprised if they have really specific plans, but maybe they do. I don't know.
Well, what I think Aaron's saying is maybe start a little earlier than usual, or maybe, and maybe we won't have all of the information, but maybe a little earlier, and maybe a little more emphasis in what we've done in past. So it's, you know, I've received quite a few calls from people in Laverne concerning the situation, and, you know, it's a little early to tell them definitive things, but the earlier we can get started, maybe a little earlier than before, because this impacts a little bit different than the other ones that have happened.
Well, I think the first meeting is in July or August. We'll get a first look at a preliminary proposal on the zoning, and then there's multiple meetings scheduled throughout the fall. So, I mean, that's a year in advance. I mean, I think that's pretty good, in terms of, I don't know. If you start too much before that, you don't know what sort of shifts there'll be in the population in terms of creating the zone. So, and I think we're all eager to hear any ideas about curricular changes or new programs or whatever, but I think we're all in agreement with you, Aaron, that we want to make sure that we do everything we can to make this transition as smooth as possible, and that we don't leave any school handicapped at the end of it. You know, I think you can get unanimous agreement with that goal.
Well, I'll just add, I have, I have great respect for the leadership that's in place now, and the leadership we'll have in place after. You know, I have been through this process so forth. I'm very comfortable that the leadership we have in place is going to look at this and research this and bring us ideas, and we'll be open to ideas. And if people have ideas, specific ideas, not just you need to do something, we recognize that there's a problem, or very well could be, some issues there. I think that is very likely to bring us some challenges, let's just say it that way. I think we're all aware of that, but I think, I'm not in a position, don't think there's it, we're in a position right now to make any specific ideas as to what we need to do to meet the challenges, until we see the challenges more specific. But like I say, I'm confident that the leadership that's in place here in the central office will stay attuned to that, and will be, and if I've got a specific idea, and I will, at the appropriate time, I mean, I think there's a thing or two that we, that we have learned from past situations that need to be addressed, but I don't see them being addressed in May.
Donald.
Well, Tim just hit on one of the things I was going to say. We've rezoned high schools before. We've rezoned and affected communities greatly. And hopefully, we have learned some things as time has gone on about that. And, you know, every time you rezon a high school, you do have quite an impact on the structure, on the outlook of many of the students at the time, and even the faculty. So when I was at Thurman Francis when Smyrna and Laverne High School was created, so I'm well aware of that as well, and know what an impact that had on the communities then. But with this rezoning, it's going to be even more far-reaching than Laverne. It's going to reach all the way into Murfreesboro, so, in the Murfreesboro area. So I don't want us to start chasing after something when there's...I have to be careful the way I say this. You know, just because someone wants something different doesn't make it better. And those principals of every one of those high schools that's going to be affected, and even those, they do not want their school to not be the best it can be. I can assure you of that. In any community, they want those high schools to be a very positive influence in that community and be recognized. Those principals, we, and I, I thank Mr. Gill, Mr. Odom, I mean, they've been through this, they will listen to those people. You have to be careful about listening to this group that has their own agenda. You've got to be careful with that. We've got a system here that's got 40,000 people in it, students in it. We can't go off here and start chasing after some group special need. We've got to be careful with that. And it doesn't make any difference where they are in Laverne, Murfreesboro, wherever they are. That's the way I see it.
Thank you. Got a question on another topic I've been asked twice in recent weeks, and I couldn't give an answer, which is TCAP scores are now incorporated into final grades, is that correct?
How much is second semester, yeah?
Could you come up and explain that? Maybe some folks at home might hear it. And the question is, well, if we don't get TCAP scores back until whenever, how do you assign final grades next week? Good question?
Depending upon the state to get us back quick scores. You have for a number of years been receiving what's called a quick score, based upon an end-of-course assessment in high school, and they have been coming back in time for us to do the average. There may be some problems this time, based upon an email I saw today. From sixth grade to 12th grade, any end-of-course test that the student takes will count 25% of the second semester grade, just the second semester. For students in grades three through five, it will be 20% of the second semester grade in math, reading, language arts, social studies, and science, in what the TCAP assesses.
So, but how do you actually do that? I mean, you get a TCAP score, do you go by the percentile of the students?
We'll get a, what's called a quick score back from them, based on the one to 100, and it's a number you can average, just like you would average. For example, we got, let me do a fifth grade, that's the one that's getting most of the questions, or something like that, elementary. Couple of ways that you can do it, that the, if, for example, you can multiply the third quarter times point four, you can multiply the fourth quarter by point four, and then you multiply the quick score by point two, add them together, and that will be your average for the half. I mean, as an educator, you know what I'm talking about. It's the same process. We can build that into STAR to do it automatically. The scores are supposed to flow back into STAR based upon that course number, and we'll have to check to see if the calculations are done correctly, but it's the same thing that's been done for years.
And we're going to do that by next week?
Part of your evaluation.
There's another measurable objective right there.
That's making your first one right there.
Be careful, they'll give us a quick test on us and make us figure that average out like you just talked about.
So, I mean, assuming they're not back, then are the, are report cards going to be given out next week? If so, we'll...
You know, that's exactly what we're talking about right now, that we'll not have a final grade in those six, but, see, we don't have a choice. This is, this is the requirement of the legislature, requirement of the state board of education. It's not optional, whether Rufford County wants to include that or not, we are required by statute to include that, so it's not an option. If they're not here, that grade will not be there.
We got the commissary education coming Thursday, 2:15, so we'll pin him down on that one.
Okay.
My nephew's wanting to go to Harvard, do you think he's going to be able to?
I mean...
Don't answer that.
For most of you, for most of you graduating seniors, unless it's U.S. history or something, most of them are not going to have something that's going to affect the graduation situation. In fact, a lot of them finish the U.S. history by junior now, so it's, for most of them, it's not a graduation decision, but it may be a grade decision.
So, and not to belabor this, but if we don't have those scores back, then they won't be getting their report cards, at least.
Or either we'll have to give it and give what we can grade and not the other pieces, and that's a decision we've got to make. We talk with them every day, and that's where we are. Mr. Gill, you got any other thoughts?
I mean, you know, I think, no, I mean, I think we've got a few days before we hit the punt, but, I mean, we get some answers on Thursday, I hope. You know, he might be able to give us some guidance with respect to what others are doing too, but...
It's an excellent plan the state has come up with.
Well, you know, so many, so much of the legislation that's come out of the legislature and also the state board is just basically not my problem, just do it.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a bad way to do business.
Well, particularly when we're relying on them to provide us the information that they're requiring us to include in the report card.
I think we'll probably have a line out of budget change for postage.
Well, I mean...
That's a good point.
That's, yeah. Or they'll all bring a self-addressed envelope, I mean. Okay, other general discussion topics? All right, we'll see you tomorrow night. We're Jared.